I'd like to call the Monmouth City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd to order. That brings us to the consent calendar. At this time, we have two items on that, which is the council meeting minutes from September 19th and the council work session minutes from September 19th. Do I hear a motion?
I think there's two items that we might want to touch basis on on page two. And I'm not sure, I think maybe you can have Phyllis relistens to the tape. There's, it kind of stops on the end of Bill Foster's statement there. So we probably need to fill that in. And then I think we've got an extra word down in the one on the very last line of that page as well. So I was thinking, maybe we could have her listen and then bring them back, if that makes sense to anybody but me.
So you want to pull the council meeting minutes out of the consent calendar?
Correct.
Okay, we can do that. You want to make a motion?
And I move to approve the work session minutes.
All right.
That's two motions.
So the motion is to withdraw the regular meeting minutes out and then approve the work session minutes?
You don't need a motion to approve any council can remove an item from the consent calendar.
Okay, all right. So then the motion is to approve the work session minutes. Do you have a second? It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? That passes. And that brings me to the mayor's report.
Did you make a decision on the council minutes?
At least my recommendation was to have Phyllis relistens to that course of tape.
My understanding was that they were withdrawn.
Well, they were withdrawn. They would still be appropriate for action, so, because withdrawing just means you can discuss it.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that it's not approved. It just means you can discuss it. So I think it'd be appropriate to either by consensus or by motion, just direct that it be, that they be brought back next meeting with the corrections. If there's consensus to do that, I think the minutes can just reflect that.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarification, Mike. All right, onto the mayor's report. In the last two weeks, the mayor's, the Polk County Mayor's Breakfast was held. There was a lot of discussion about the Salem River Crossing and how that's going to impact Polk County, so there might be some future information coming to the council by the City of Salem and Polk County regarding that issue and how we might participate or get more informed on that. The HLC Conference was this last weekend. Scott and I attended. The sessions that I went to mostly were on property tax, unpacking it and property tax reform. And then also, there were a couple of things I went to on homeless issues. Got a chance to go on a tour where we went to the Right to Dream Homeless Camp and got to see that, talk with people there. And then one of the other things that was really nice, county city insurance recognizes cities for how well they do on injury, time loss. And Monmouth was awarded for the employees the Gold Safety Award for zero work time loss. And we have 63 in full-time employees, so that's pretty significant on being able to keep them all safe. And they do a really good job on, as staff with employees of keeping everybody educated in the insurance company, on helping people to minimize the risk as they work, especially since we have some fairly high-risk employees with police, power, and light and public works. So it's significant. So I'll get this to you, Scott, so that you can pass around to departments however you want to get recognition to the employees. And with that, we'll move on to reports of council representatives. Counselor Silvernagle?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on September 26th. The highlights, I would say, well, one of them was the senior center director recruitment, and Scott gave an update to the group there on it. I believe October 25th, they're planning to do interviews. They did elect officers at the meeting as well, so I have a full slate there. There's a joint meeting that's being scheduled, I believe, on October 12th between advisory board and the friends board. So they're going to do, have a meeting of both groups together. They're starting a bereavement group, and I believe it was starting the 2nd of October, which would have been yesterday, I guess. And there's going to be a veterans breakfast on November 11th. And Sue's last day will be, her retirement date is November 30th, so that's coming up as well. They did clarify on their rental agreements that they're not accepting commercial vendors. They're not allowing those to rent in that particular facility. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Counselor Sherman?
For the tree board, the tree board met on September 21st and gave much gratitude to Gordon Taylor for his good note-taking. We didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't elect new officers, and we'll do that next time. Mark Fancy showed us a plaque that will be in the main street commemorating the eclipse for the time capsule, which will be opened at the time of the next eclipse, which will be like a million years from now. And then Mark Fancy also had a lot of small trees, and they are now safely in the care of some of the tree board members. And in November, they're going to be planting them in General Woods Park to provide some bank stabilization there. And Gordon has also done some work looking at the trees at Monmouth Elementary School, and in particular, the tree that was planted to, in the memory of a small child who died. And Gordon has some good recommendations for how we can honor that little boy with that nice tree. And we also talked about Mark's ideas of planting trees in people's yards, as we're sort of running out of public space now to plant trees. And then Gordon, as a gift to Mark on his retirement, gave him a very important article from the Louisiana Department of Fish and Game about nuisance allocators. And according to Gordon, Mark was deeply moved by that. Thank you, Gordon.
Is it?
And that concludes the report from the tree board.
Counselor Kirin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Minnetonka Board of Directors meets Thursday next. On the 5th, I think I recall, I mentioned last time that because of the legal morbid increases, we delayed our meeting. So we'll be meeting on the 5th at Henry Hill Elementary, our education service center. It's a pretty standard meeting. There are a couple of items that we will be discussing. One is the contract for the general manager, Don Patton. It's his fourth. He's been here four years. And anyway, there's some contract issues and so on that we're going to be dealing with, with him. There's going to be some discussion about the efficacy of refinancing some of the Minnetonka bonds, and there's some thought that we could save some money by doing that. We're going to be reviewing the, what the intergovernmental agreement suggests is a periodic review of the split between the cities of Monmouth and Independence relative to the, you know, any debt obligation. Currently, it's Monmouth shoulders 55% of any overrun and Independence 45, based on when that agreement went into place. I believe the population was, was how that was divided. We've had a census since then. We've had, we've had a number of other things, and so I think we can take a look to see whether that's still appropriate. We do have an executive session to discuss business opportunities. Relative to finances, I normally report on that. I didn't get a chance to really dig into that, but I can say that the finances continue to remain stable. There's no dramatic up or downtick relative to revenue or expenses, so that continues to be stable. After Thursday, our next meeting will be October 26th in the same location. So that does.
All right, thanks. With that, are there any community announcements that the councilants would like to make a swerve? All right. With that, Scott?
Yep, thanks. Periodically, from the council venue, I have Dr. Hinkle's on campus. He has a policy analysis class, and I've been able to prepare exercises for the students. And each time, we're able to come up with something. I could always make up infinite projects. We always find something actually real. Like, we talked about economic development, what to do with the city hall building. There's the, and one is the library. So the idea is, you know, what's the value of the library and what changes going on? If you had to map out a mission for the next 25 years, what would that look like? So they'll actually have to get themselves familiar with our library compared to other libraries, figure out really what it does, and then give us some suggestions on how you can move it forward in the future. So that should be a good project. Did the extent, offered and accepted for a new community development director, so that's Suzanne Dufner, and she's working with the City of Dallas right now. So she'll be here October 26th. So in the gap, kind of Phyllis and I are sharing responsibilities covering things, and she's available if really something comes up that's more complex. So we'll get that available. Police department, want to note that we went through a sergeant process with a shift, because we actually took one of the people, went up to lieutenant. So actually, Michael Strack, the officer, is now the sergeant. And so then Daryl continues, his domino effect as he's working in the other employees there. Down at Public Works, we got the dechlorination building almost ready to go. They're going to get some kind of field testing on that within a week, and so we'll have that operational pretty soon. And you may have noticed that the mayors aren't here anymore. They apparently don't like mayors anymore, so. We finally figured out where the leak was. It was actually a drain. We couldn't get a contractor to come out, but on our staff is Larry Thornton, who's also kind of the building maintenance guy. So Larry, actually, with some help, was able to actually find the problem. The pipe ripped, go out there, want to drop a new pipe down, get it sealed back. What's lacking right now is sheet rock. So we've got that covered up, and we'll get that fixed. We've also got a similar one in the garage over here that we need to get to. But Larry's incredibly valuable in all of the various things we do around the buildings' maintenance. And since we have no dedicated maintenance staff, all the buildings take care of themselves. And Larry kind of takes care of our suite here, including the senior centers. So thank you for that. With that, I am done. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And that brings us to citizen comments. This is a time that is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Maximum three minutes per item, please. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business agenda. And item one is an update of law enforcement use of deadly physical force response plan. Chief Talons?
Thank you, Mayor Nell again. Members of the council, for you is a request to approve the updated Polk County Law Enforcement Use of Deadly Physical Force Response Plan. This plan was originally created in 2008 as a result of Senate Bill 111, which was passed by the 2007 Oregon Legislature. The Polk County Plan was originally approved by the Monmouth City Council in 2008. The Polk County Planning Authority is co-chaired by District Attorney Aaron Felton and by Sheriff Mark Garten, who has joined me this evening. Members of the planning authority also include all the police chiefs in Polk County, representative from the Oregon State Police, labor union representative, who happens to be a Polk County Deputy Sheriff, and a citizen member. The document is best described as a set of standardized procedures that all law enforcement agencies will follow in the event that an officer intentionally uses deadly physical force, regardless of the outcome. It describes how we will take care of the officer or officers involved, and how we will conduct the investigation under the district attorney's direction by using an outside agency as the lead investigative agency. And I thought I'd just quickly read the preamble that's in the plan, which describes what it really does. And it says that Polk County law enforcement agencies recognize the importance to both their agencies and our communities to ensure that any intentional use of deadly physical force by a police officer is investigated in a professional, competent, and impartial manner. The openness with which we proceed in these investigations is critical to establishing and maintaining trust within the community. It is clear our citizens examine closely the actions any law enforcement agency takes when their officers intentionally use deadly physical force. And it is our goal to ensure the community is confident and accepting of the actions Polk County law enforcement agencies take when involved in these situations. So the planning authority recently met a few months ago and made just some minor updates to the plan. And really, they were very minor. What we determined was that the plan still included a few names from previous chiefs and previous sheriffs, so we updated that with the current police chiefs and listing the current police chiefs and the current sheriff in the plan. And then the other was that we made sure that there are procedures within the plan that will be followed regardless of the outcome of the use of deadly physical force. So for instance, if deadly force is used and the outcome is that no one is hurt or injured, that doesn't mean that we don't investigate it. We still do, and we still follow this plan, no matter what the outcome. A public hearing was held to receive public input on this plan, after which the planning authority voted to adopt the minor updates. And now staff is recommending to you that the council approve that updated plan. And I'll take any questions, or if you'd like, Sheriff Garten is also here.
You have any questions?
I haven't seen the plan. Where is the plan? Do you have a? I have the plan, and if you wish to see that, you certainly let me know, and I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
It's online, too. Anybody can access it online.
It's probably online with the sheriff's office, the old, is it the old plan still? The old version. Okay. I can, I can get you the new plan, so you can see the changes.
I'd just like to see it before I put approval or anything. I'm sure it's fine. I just want to make sure I get to see the actual document before I take any action. Put the A and A.
I mean, Kirin?
So those were the only changes, were those that you just described?
Yeah, and I brought the sheriff here, too, also as the co-chair. And when we held the public hearing, he obviously chaired that meeting. And essentially, there really substantially, other than just some minor, I guess grammatical things that we changed, the only thing that we substantially changed were the names of those that are involved as far as the planning authority, the makeup for the planning authority. And then, again, like I mentioned, the fact that no matter the outcome, we're still going to make, conduct the investigation, so.
And this is a document that the city council had approved back in 2008, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I'm uncomfortable as well. Passing on this without, without having read it, I, while I have every confidence in the people that were involved, and clearly, it's the type of plan that does need to be developed by professionals, people in the, in the business, so to speak. But it also calls for, you know, elected officials to review and approve that, because, you know, should there be a, as there has been across the country, incidents related to this, city governments have been asked to defend, you know, what their officers have done. And so I feel it's pretty important that, I mean, I sort of feel it's incumbent upon us to have read that, even though I'm sure there's been accurate that it doesn't make a lot of sense to the layperson.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, there are some general flows and protocols, I'm sure, that are there. Because we will be, and I, I'm confident that we would be, you know, one of your first line of defense, you know, should there, should there be something?
And remember, the plan is the response to after.
I understand that. I understand that. It doesn't have anything to do with the decision to.
Correct.
Right. But that's where the problems have come across the country, is in the backend of that.
Yeah, which is why the legislature took action in '07, which is why every county in the state of Oregon has one of these plans in place.
Sure. And I guess I'm, I'm also going to be anxious to read it, because, you know, since 2008, a lot of things have happened since 2008. I think there's, there's been things that have worked out pretty well and things that haven't worked out so well relative to investigating officer-involved shootings. I'm surprised there wasn't more than this name changes, but, but again, it may have been sort of the gold standard when it was written, and I'm confident that it's pretty good.
Once these, once the plan is, once the planning authority puts this plan together, it actually goes to the attorney general for approval. And so that's, that's what we have done, both originally and with the update, for the attorney general's approval. Underneath the law, it, it states that two-thirds of the government entities have to approve of it, so they essentially just want to make sure that you're familiar with it as it's presented, and then the attorney general approves of the plan. But I would be certainly glad to give you a copy of the plan, if you guys would like the copy of it.
Yeah, I'm not, frankly, I'm not, I mean, is there, is there a, is this a time-sensitive issue?
Not necessarily. I don't know if we're under a timeline for it or not, if we have to get it. No, okay.
I mean, I, personally, I'm not interested in holding it up, but, but I'm not, I'm not at all interested in voting until I've read the thing.
Sure.
And I didn't see a timeframe there, so.
Maybe we should move to put it on the next agenda and get the thing.
I would be.
And since I'm the representative for the tree board, and we're always trying to save trees, you can just Google Polk County Response to Deadly Physical Force Plan.
Is that the old plan?
I imagine that if it's just minor changes, most of us know who the.
Yeah, if you get the content, and I can, I can certainly send it electronically also, if you want the, this copy also.
I've already read it, so we don't need someone to.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it's not necessarily for changes to be recommended, or I guess, by the council, because it's, it's been already sent through, and we had a public hearing. The hearing was closed, and it was adopted. So it's essentially, what I come to you with is a plan for your review, and we will send it on to the, to the attorney general's office. And I think, Sheriff Garten, do you want, did you want to make a comment? You get, can you sit at that one? That'd be good, yeah.
I guess the, the key thing is, 7011, even the statute says exactly what we have to do. And instead of using that statute in our policy, because we actually put it into words, so it is, it is exactly what state law, current state law says we have to do from A to Z, essentially. And so we just put that into, into words and make it flow and easily read, because it's a, state statutes sometimes is difficult to read. So, yeah, it's exactly what is required of us, so, but we send that out, no issue.
That'd be great.
Because I'm reading the staff report, and the bottom of the front base of the bill, a Senate Bill 111 requires that each governing body within Polk County either approve or disapprove of the plan. And I know that if it's two-thirds, then, then, you know, there's, that's fine, but, but each governing body would seem that we ought to weigh in and be informed in how we do that. And then, once it's been, you know, submitted and approved or disapproved, forward on to the attorney general. So that, while it may not be a, you know, step that would cause any major change, it does call for that, for the approval and disapproval by each one. And you said two-thirds needed to approve. Yeah. So I'm sure, you know, I'm confident, again, in the document, I just haven't read it, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So did you want to?
Yeah, so I make a motion to table this until the next city council meeting, and we can have a direct staff to send electronic copy to home and county, and we can take this up again next time.
Second. It's been moved in secondment to table this, law enforcement use of deadly force response plan approval to the October?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth meeting. It's been moved in secondment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that's tabled. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And that moves us to our next item of business, a resolution adopting building department fees. This would be Director Thorpe.
Mr. Mayor and council members, staff report, subject permit fee increase. A summary, a one-time fee increase and a change to the annual fee adjustments proposed for building permit fees. The last fee adjustment that was made was in 2014, kind of on a three-year cycle. We did 2011 before that. And the building department is proposing a 10% fee increase for all statewide specialty codes that the city of Monmouth administers. The fee increase is necessary to maintain the viability of the department and adjust for increasing costs. There has been substantial cost increase in, increase for the public employee retirement system and healthcare benefits. The recent cost of an adjustment of 2.3%, which was reported by the Consumer Price Index, plus another 2.75% charge will become effective upon implementation of the statewide e-permitting system. Budget has been reduced to a bare minimum. However, the work level with permits and inspections has risen to a level that is increasingly difficult to accomplish as a one-member department. Reserves have decreased for the last two budget cycles, and fees have not been increased since 2014. It is also recommended that an automatic 3% increase be applied effective the 1st of July each year. This increase is needed to cover increasing costs for pers, health insurance, and will help minimize operating deficit in the fund. With an automatic adjustment, the department should be able to maintain viability into the future with comparable levels. These fees are comparable with Dallas, Corvallis, and Polk County.
Are there any further questions? Any questions?
Larry, have you ever, has anybody ever run the numbers to see what it would take in increases in fees to hire and train an assistant for you, somebody to be in the office while you're out in the field?
Well, you know, that's part of why I'm requesting the fee increase, is that it is, it's difficult to run the office, because I have to be out a lot. People come in, they want to ask questions, phone calls. So one person trying to do everything, you know, filing everything, making permits, going out to do inspections, it's really difficult. It's, it's, it's kind of exhausting in a way, because you're, you've got to be moving constantly. Plus, there's a lot of things I try to help the city with. So what I would recommend after, if we have this fee increase approved, is what I would be recommending is we look into hiring a person as a part-time employee. Not hire him as a full-time, hire him through a temporary agency for a period of time till we, so we can work out and see what this is all going to cost. Because it depends on what kind of certifications they might have, whether they're also a building inspector, or maybe they're just a permit tech, or they could be maybe like a secretary, then those costs, you know, is dependent on their skill levels. So, so, under the financial implications, the building department has a, we have a healthy reserve right now, but that healthy reserve is dependent on how many people you have. And for the last couple of years, we've actually been going into the hole. So as an example, we spent $43,000 more last year than we actually brought in. And so it requires, you know, large permits or lots of permits, you know, to come in, that kind of thing. And actually, when you, if the building department brought in like 180-some thousand last year, so if you figured a 10% increase, that's only $18,000 increase over the board for everything. And that actually would drive, because you've got a lot of small permits that are like $60, so they would go up basically 10% of that. Now, part of this fee increase is because we're looking into going into e- Now, part of this fee increase is because we're looking into going into e-permitting. That's where, you know, it's the state software that is supplied for free, no charge, there's no maintenance costs, there's none of that kind of thing. But the, it's for people to be able to purchase permits online and pay for them with a credit card, and the state requires the building department to absorb those costs, which is about 2.75%. So you can't add it back. What they want you to do is increase your fees to cover it, and that's how it's paid for. So that's the reason why I put in that percentage in there. Along with this, there was a resolution that was made up, and I would request that, there's actually an error on this, I'm requesting the fee increase, if it should be approved, to be effective on 1st of January of 2018. That's kind of, the reason for that is that we're looking to try to get into the e-permitting business around the 1st of the year. We've already had our initial meeting. So that's what those costs would be covering. And then also, the state has actually changed a couple of ways they want building departments to actually administer fees. So in those changes, they're on these forms, and maybe if you noticed, the effective date on all the application forms, it states the 1st of January 2018. So I'd like to have, you know, if there's any questions on it, what I would propose is that I would notify the state of an additional hearing towards the second meeting of November, and have an open hearing for contractors to be able to come in. I've actually notified the state on that, but I notified them that we were going to be effective on the 1st of January. So I'd want, just to eliminate any confusion, I would request that we have another meeting with a hearing on the second meeting of November, and whether it's approved or disapproved, you'll have the opportunity to speak, to listen to anybody that should come in from the community.
So are you saying that the city software program will work with the e-permitting now?
Well, the building department software that we currently use, that company went defunct like 10 years ago. And to be able to run that software, I have to maintain on the computer an old Word system. Because if it was, if I was to put a new operating system on there, it'd be dead in water, and so we'd lose all of our data. So the e-permitting system, the state will come in, and they will download all your data that you have from permits that goes back to the last 20 years, and it will go into the new software. They've done this with this same software for even Dallas, they have the same software that I'm currently running, and they just went on e-permitting.
That's good. Will this begin the 1st of the year?
Well, we've asked for them to come back and speak to other department heads, because it also covers planning and public works, and it can cover power and light, there's modules for that. They provide all of that for free with the state software. So we're going to have another meeting with the state to allow other department heads to come in and to look at what's being offered.
That's good. Glad to hear it.
So, I need to get some clarification, because you just confused me. One was changing the date from October 1st to January 1st. And then you also said something about a hearing in November?
Yeah.
What's the hearing?
Okay, for any fee increases, the state requires that you have a hearing, and you notice that hearing, so that contractors can come in, they've got some opposition to it, and so that you listen to that. And so, when I originally notified the state of the hearing date that we would have, we actually slipped back one council meeting timeframe. And so, I want to re-notify the state to make sure that, because we still have 90 days, I'll re-notify the state, make that clarification to them when the hearing's going to be held. And I'd like to request that we have an additional meeting on this, at the city council, on the second meeting in November.
So then, we don't need to do this resolution tonight?
No, I'm requesting that we actually don't do the resolution tonight, but I wanted to bring this information, so, because the last time I asked for a fee increase, it took a couple of different meetings to actually get it through.
Okay.
For everybody to understand it.
If I could back up a little bit, is there a separate something we have to, because this is, this is public, it's already been publicly noticed. Is there something different we have to do?
Um.
To conform to state requirements? Because this has been public notice, if a builder was interested in testifying, they can be here tonight.
Well, then, if it's been public notice, then it should, we should be fine.
But you want to change the dates?
I want to change the date to January 1st, 2018, because all of the forms that I've made, and I've sent to the state, I told them my effective date would be January 1st, 2018.
So, in the public notice, was the October date used, or was the January date used?
No, for the public notice, the October date was used with the, see, I have to send them in all of my application forms with fees, and so this is what they've been given.
Okay. So we need to re-notice, post a new notice with the revised dates of January 1st?
Let's bring this back, I'll.
Direct us to bring it back.
News to me, and I'll get together, we'll carry it, and get this worked out. So we really need to do it here.
But I do, I just have a couple of quick questions. So these schedules here reflect the 10% increase across the board, and all of the new permits and things like that.
And there's actually a couple of different changes on there. The state required a different way of actually applying fees. So this meets all the state requirements, these fees right here, the way they're applied.
So I believe the question from staff was to get it back to staff and let them, so unless there's any, is there a significant question that you have, John?
Well, I guess I'm wondering why this wasn't, you know, we're barely into this fiscal year, and I'm wondering why this wasn't addressed or discussed during the budgeting process.
Well, it wasn't addressed during the budget process, because normally, each time that we do, I request some kind of a fee increase, it's always been in October. October is the timeframe. And the part of this is driven by the way that we increased fees before, because in here, it's asking an annual 3%, it was always based off of the Consumer Price Index, and we had a couple of years that was like 0.3%. And that really doesn't get you anywhere, when you have, you know, a large increase in the retirement system requirements, and public employees, health insurance, and stuff like that. You have those big, huge costs, that we don't really know what they're going to be at some time, until they're just about ready to be implemented. And so, those are really big driving factors. Plus, then we had a 2.3% Consumers Price Index increase, and now, we found out the other day, it'd be a 2.75% increase for the state e-permitting system. So with those things all added up, you're just continuing to go further into the hole all the time.
Okay. So staff has requested that this, go back to them, so is everybody okay with doing this from tonight's action? All right. Thanks. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Larry.
So we'll move on to the next item of business, the first reading of ordinance adopting comprehensive plan map amendment, zone change 17-2, by your corporation, in their block itself. Is it? Add it to, Scott?
I can do a background sometimes, just by reading the first reading, just depends on.
Next, this should be 1701, I think the agenda is wrong, it was 1702 twice. This is 1701. 1702 is a legislative amendment.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Staff report, you can just read the ordinance in the first time, whatever you want to do.
So I'm going to read this by title, an ordinance amending the Monmouth comprehensive plan map designation for a certain parcel of real property located in the 800 block of Warren Street South, known as Assessor Map Number 8483, Tax Lot Number 800, for mixed-density residential, from mixed-density residential to high-density residential, and amending the Monmouth zoning map designation for said parcel, from mixed-density residential, MX, to high-density residential, RH. And I declare this passed the first reading. And we'll move on to the next item.
Just one thing, Steve, the staff report I have here says that it's Assessor Map Number 8438, not 83.
We'll check that and see if we can fix that on the next one, second reading, if we need to, yeah.
Okay.
One of those could be transposed, that's all, it's easy.
Okay. And, so the next item of business, there's a first reading of ordinance adopting legislative amendment 1702 amendments to Monmouth City Code, Title 17, subdivision. And I probably just read the pile of the ordinance, and now it's passed its first reading. And we'll have those next reading for second reading approval. With that, are there any council comments?
Yes, I have a, I have a statement I'd like to read.
Okay.
Mayor Meligan and my fellow counselors, last week on my public city counselor Facebook page, I was subjected to a scathing personal attack on my character by a Monmouth City Department head. The source of his ire seemed to come from two things. Number one, my inference on my personal Facebook page that there is a lack of diversity on the Monmouth City Council. And, number two, my minority vote on the rezoning of Tax Lot 800 at our last meeting. After a few paragraphs, the diatribe descended into bullying, and this department head wrote that no one on the city staff has any time for me, and inferred that few people like me. Then the piling on began, as members of his family joined in the attack on me. I would like to mention that this has been a pattern with this particular individual. This was not the first time he did this. While I'm a very strong supporter of free speech, let me remind everyone that Americans do not have a right to engage in libel. What this department head wrote about me is untrue, and it was clearly done with malicious intent to harm my reputation. Recently, the Dallas City Council had a discussion about decorum on social media, and I believe it's time we had one as well. It would not be in anyone's interest if this attack on me led other city department heads and employees to believe that we counselors are fair game to be harassed, threatened, and intimidated based on the way we vote. Most importantly in my mind is the concern that this kind of behavior may stifle dissent, and dissent is one of the hallmarks of a free society. I would not want any of you, or any future counselor, to feel you had to vote a certain way, or refrain from speaking out at council meetings, for fear of being threatened by city staff on social media. The Monmouth City Charter spells out the responsibilities of our city manager. Among those are that he direct, supervise, and discipline the department heads who report to him. I think in regard to this issue, we need to provide clear guidance to our city manager, so he can effectively do his job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn, and then we'll pick up work session in the back? It's been moved to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. We're on pause, and we are adjourned.